Welcome to this Sunbury American presentation of the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, Sunbury City Council meeting. This is an unedited recording of the full meeting. Public comments are held at the end of the meeting. Thank you for watching. Please hit the like button and leave a comment. It really helps the algorithm. If you haven't already, please subscribe to the channel and hit the notification bell to get all the upcoming videos from our channel. Thank you and enjoy the video.
All right, call us, bring the order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call, please. Ister.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Brochus.
Here.
Barnard.
Here.
Martina. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? We do have one public comment from a gentleman here, uh, from, wants to give us some information. He's doing it now until at the end because he has to leave the intended meeting here at six thirty, so go ahead, sir.
Thank you so much. Um, gentlemen of the council, uh, my name is Harry Lewis. I'm from Northumberland. I'm a relative newcomer to the area. Um, I, I also am a history buff. I'm on the board of the Joseph President Seemover in Northumberland and I, I, I've had a great time serving on their board. It's a great organization. But I've learned, uh, during my time in Northumberland that back in nineteen eighty-eight, Northumberland created a national historic district, meaning the National Park Service approved Northumberland for a national historic district for its historic downtown. And, um, in following up on that, I discovered that there are a lot of federal funds available, federal programs, um, and opportunities for that community, uh, because of the national historic district. I also discovered that Sunbury itself has a national historic designated by the National Park Service, as all of you are sure are aware, and there are some newer tax credit programs, grant programs, and other things available to Sunbury because of that designation. So just wanted to appear tonight, uh, tell you about this. I'm giving you a handout, describing this in more detail. Danville also has a national historic district. Lewisburg has a national historic district. And Lewisburg, of course, locally have been spectacular in, uh, taking advantage of your designation to apply for, uh, federal and state monies, uh, tax credits for your citizens for development, things like that. Um, so there's local talent and expertise available to the city of Sunbury, um, if they choose to pursue it. If you can contact the folks in Lewisburg, they can show you how to do it because they've been doing this stuff very successfully for over twenty years. In fact, I think more than that now. So just wanted to give you the handouts, tell you this in very general terms, and I hope you will pursue it.
Thank you, Harry. Appreciate it, sir.
Thanks so much, sir.
Have a great evening.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comment at this time on agenda items? Any other public comment on agenda items? All right, moving on. Uh, make a motion for approval of minutes and reports. Minutes from February twelve, twenty-six, and reports from the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, code office, health department, parks and rec, and planning commission. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnard.
Yes.
All right, moving on, we have old business, uh, Siskiyou Avenue bid award. Derek, I don't know who wants to talk about it.
If there's any questions on the, uh, contract for the, you have the numbers there, Derek?
For, for the, we have six bidders and the low bid, which is our base bid, alternate number one and an alternate number two, which those are, uh, super laterals and water system, um, is three million, three hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars, um, and we're looking to award that.
Is there any other questions to that? As for the phase one of Siskiyou Avenue?
And that goes, obviously, from Reagan up to Packer, correct?
Yes. We met with the authority last Tuesday night to go over the whole, uh, contract, what it consisted of. They, of course, uh, signed off on it and gave us a letter, received a letter, right?
Yes, yep. We have them agreeing that they would like to do the base bid, alternate number one and alternate, right?
Who's the?
Ms. Bultard, oh, uh, sorry. Ms. Bultard, yes, we know.
I'm sorry, John, Ms. Bultard. So at that time, I'll make a motion to retable the contract to, uh, C R.
The, uh?
G N R Charles? G N R Charles.
Second, all second. Barnard.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Uh, moving on, city hall upgrade, uh, in front of us here is a proposal, uh, from, uh, Strausser Bear, uh, says about their, their services that we're providing to it. I mean, if you turn to, I guess it's the third page, you'll see the cost breakdown of eighteen thousand and what it includes of the architectural fees, design development, construction documents, bidding, and construction administration. Um, I spoke with Rocky today and for some odd reason, we vote here tonight and a month from now, we choose to stop the project. Uh, we will not get charged the full eighteen thousand. It's only about what services he put in up to that point where he decides to stop. I mean, we spoke, I don't know if it was last meeting or two meetings ago, about, you know, the estimated costs. This will give us a more accurate cost of what it will design. Like I said, this is just to move forward, this is not to take out any loans, but use the money that we already allocated from the rescue funds.
It's, it's, so during the process, could you vote for that because it's over the minimum?
What, I mean, um, which, which part, Dean? I'm sorry.
So to procure services with your arbo funds, you have to vote through the procurement process, so if it's less than ten thousand dollars, that's a minor purchase, you're worried about it. Over that, you have to solicit votes.
So my question is, I mean, we, we can do that. I mean, it's, it has all the services provided in one, so if we just do, you know, for example, we just do the architectural fees to start to vote, that means you have an example. Can we do that?
If they give you a proposal that's less than nine thousand, ten thousand dollars, yes.
Okay, so I guess we'll have to go back to Rocky, have him break it down in those costs. So I guess, will this table this at the moment? Do I have a motion to table to a later date, to get it under, impossible?
You at least have to call, I think, to get telephone votes at that, between ten and twenty-two or twenty-three, something like that. I have to look at exactly when to go back to the office.
Okay. Well, I'll get back to Rocky to see if we can do that. If not, we'll do, go the option.
You, you vote for professional services?
Yes, because of it being federal funding. It falls under the C M R two numbers, right? So even though it is funding that's been put in under revenue laws, we still have to make sure we follow all of those things. If it was straight up local money, you know, general fund money, no, we don't.
So I'll make a motion to table this to a later date. Do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Barnard.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Barnard.
Uh, I make the motion to, I mean, Collins requested a ninety-day extension, so I make a motion to give them that time extension. If there's any questions about it, I can, I can answer them, you can address Mike, who wrote. So I make a motion to get Grant them the ninety-day extension.
Second. Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, new business, Mr. Backer, Truist Grant.
I received the email last week, uh, Truist Grant is opening up again. Um, I just wanted to put this on the agenda to, uh, vote to go for it, for our, um, Learn to Swim. So I, we can go then for other things at a later date. I just wanted to get that one out of the way. I know we put in for the sweep project in the past and, um, sure Philovich is aware of this and this being open, um, doesn't mean we can only go just for Learn to Swim or sweep, so I just want to bring that to everybody potentially to vote for that.
I'll make that.
Second. Barnard.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Uh, keep going, Mr. Backer.
Um, Pennsylvania Blueprint Communities Resolution, we need to do a resolution for the blueprint communities as our next part of the, um, potentially grantee or granted process. So in order to be considered fully, we have to have this. Um, so I'm just hoping for.
I'll make that into a form of a motion to accept the P A Blueprint, meaning Resolution twenty-four, zero fourteen. Second. Barnard.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Uh, moving on, Bray's Foundation grant. So the Strickly softball team has put in a grant application to the Dagenstein to go through the Bray's Foundation. Uh, Bree Aquabam Kula wanted an official vote from the city of Sunbury because the funds they're looking to get from the Dagenstein are going to go towards upgrading the softball field that they don't own, but the city owns. They just need an official vote from the city that's saying, all right, we're okay with them using those funds to, from the Dagenstein through the Bray's Foundation to upgrade the softball field. So this Bree just needed an official vote to ensure that we give the support to use those funds out.
Do we need to sign for the?
No, Bree, Bree.
No, it's all good.
It's all going through them, Bree just needed a, a vote saying that we have, we approve them.
We agree, can I actually do that?
Correct.
Are you motion?
Yes.
Second.
Brochus. Yes. Barnard.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Savage, vouchers and invoices.
So I'd like to make a motion for the approval of abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars, sixty-eight cents. Liquid fuel funds in the amount of five thousand, ninety-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Uh, private grants and, and payroll in the amount of sixty-three thousand, three hundred fifty dollars and eleven cents.
Second. Barnard.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Uh, moving on, discussion topics, uh, old police department building, just want to give an update on the process of that. Uh, Jeff and Carl getting in there, uh, slowly take out some of the old outdated electronics to get the bill, start to get the voting cleaned up. I know the chief has been working with Todd to get some of the paperwork collected, to get that sorted as well, to try to get the inside more cleaned up. Uh, we did have some issues that we, um, brought to our insurance company to try to get some insurance money to fix some of the issues that, that earned, uh, that have taken place throughout the building, so we're gonna see, hopefully get some funds to hopefully fix up that building due to, you know, natural things that have, you know, that happen to all places over time, the building, you know, is how old, so just want to give an update on that, so they're starting to get it cleaned out, things like that.
When we're at, uh, contractor comes in next week and starts, uh, roof sections, we discussed it, uh, last Friday, it's foot aggressive, all the areas have been prepared, just cleaning out the electronics, walkers coming in, taking out all the shelving, we can salvage, move down to the warehouse to be utilized, and then we just set the rest of the, uh, debris, the whole off, and we're working on that. So, all those, by the way, we should look pretty good.
Now you're gonna get all the units.
And, uh, it's a great decision. Well, Sunbury, uh, some of the issues.
All right, sounds good. Moving on, municipal authority, uh, so obviously we know the Sunbury municipal authority, uh, falls under the city of Sunbury, but I said they, I think forty years ago, they decided to have their own board. I just think we should look at different options here for the municipal authority and see if, you know, see what has worked on the open market to see if, because a lot of municipalities nowadays no longer have their own municipal authority, they are, were sold off to other bigger like Ottawa P A or American Water. I think we should see what the, the option is out there to, to see what has worked because, you know, something, if somebody's window, make us an offer on it, we can, you know, work negotiations, the lock rates in for our citizens for, you know, X number of years or guarantee that they, you know, they become to do an infrastructure project, they have the funds to support it and stuff like that. So I just wanted to bring that up for discussion because it's just an option that we can look and look into to, you know, help better the city, help move on our infrastructure projects to help save our citizens money in the long term. So it's just something to look into because I did some research and two years ago, York City, which is, I know a little bit bigger than us, but they sold their authority for two hundred and thirty-five million dollars. So I think it's something we should just, it's an option to look into if we can better our community and, you know, bring funds back in the city and help save the city money in the long run, I think it's something we can look into. That was just, just a topic of discussion. I don't know, anyone have any thoughts or ideas about it?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go right ahead.
How, how would you say about wanting rates, how would you want rates?
What?
Part of the sale.
So maybe part of the sale, like, for example, I'm just giving this as an example, like, you can't raise rates for so long, or if you do raise it, you don't want to raise it in that this percentage. Or, for example, uh, this, as we right now, we have, uh, like, we don't pay water or dump charges or, you know, those, those are negotiations that will take place in this city. If, you know, if it goes that way, so these are just options I think we should look into so we could, you know, perhaps, you know, save the city long term. Joe, Joe.
Uh, we also can sort theirs for thirty-seven million dollars and go find, so.
Yeah.
As a contest.
Yeah. So like I said, this is nothing, it's not going to be locked in this, I'm saying we have to do this, this is something we should look into options to do anything.
Who is, who is, uh, Milton Beach?
For water?
For water?
Yep.
Uh, but did, did you, when, when you sold yourself for water or just, just the sewer? Like, you're a lot of water.
Like water and sewer, it, it depends. Yeah, but well, you know, it's just an option to see what's out there, you know, is someone to take both or just one, or that, like I said, this is nothing set in stone, it's just, just looking at different options. I don't think there's a question.
Um, last week, I can't remember where I saw it, but there was a, a story in the news about a water company, it's not national water company, or local water company, that just raised it to, almost fifty percent. And it was one of those situations where they bought the immediate water system and then they decided, all of a sudden, we're gonna fix everything, so they dumped that door on people.
I think it was a hundred and ten show, I think they asked for thirty-nine percent to vote on that. Back to you, Joe. Two thousand five to seven million dollars, you can't, how much of the seven million dollars should go out?
Then what's the debt load?
So, uh, first of all, the question, uh, I would already, we don't have, probably only two million dollars. That's very poor planning when it comes to the electoral officials over the past twenty-five years, um, or twenty years, I guess. The debt load, we're currently in, uh, over a hundred million dollars, the sewer authority because we operate in, it's a regional sewer authority now, uh, but we, yeah, it, both regional sewer authority holds around a hundred million dollars in debt.
So you took your own systems, sold for seven million, joined the authority.
Yep.
And the debt services, a hundred million dollars, I don't know how many municipalities are tied into that. And that's probably a thirty-year note, might be a fifty-year note or something like that.
Yeah.
Unless you, so now you're down to two million dollars left.
Because of the terrible thing on the electoral officials account. They told, the higher we have the state representative and the state senator, oh, we're gonna use that money, we're gonna put it in the bank account, relevant off the interest. That didn't happen. That didn't happen. They, they hold from it every single year without raising taxes.
Okay.
Difference is we have a good treasurer.
You have smart people.
Yeah.
And rate wise, if you join the authority, you can't control the rates, you just want to vote amongst the whole group.
Because there, uh, is Milton holds sixty percent of the, um, uh, the waste that goes into the, the authority, we control seven of the seats, so we control the majority of the seats on, on the authority.
And the rates have done what? Since you joined the authority?
They've gone up, I don't know, it, I'm, it's to me, I don't think they're substantial, but I'm sure Con and I don't argue otherwise. Yeah. Yeah.
I need more information on it.
They're going to raise your rates based on what they're doing everywhere, so your citizens' rates are going to go up because that's in the water system, same in Turbinville because Pennsylvania American Water owns my water system. So.
That's right.
Instead of being put over everybody, instead of just the community where.
Turbinville sold your water.
Yes.
American Water, I know the rates went up.
Oh, yes.
But they have to go by P U C rates, so.
They have to be approved.
That's true, they're P U C, okay? They have investors because they're stockholders, so they have to think you provide a service plus make money for the stockholder.
Correct.
And they're primarily owned, owned by the city of Sunbury with the authority, they're not a profit-making, they pay their bills and they continue on, or make the necessary repairs, they don't make sure the stockholders take care, and the P U C doesn't control the rates here in the city of Sunbury. When they go public, P U C steps in and then they control. Am I right, Mr. Oz?
That is true, if you go for public, if you go with something that's public.
That's correct. That's why they have stock. As far as rates go, R already raises the rates every year too. So. They have been repaid.
You have to support yourself.
Right, because of, so raising a rate.
Raising a rate is, is, you know, a, a factor in this whole thing because.
Somebody's raising the rates all the time.
A waste, I mean, it is.
It depends on how much you're raising your rates.
Correct. Correct. The factor is municipal authority of the city of Sunbury's raising rates because of the infrastructure projects, because even the number is going to benefit the stockholders on their, turning their dollar.
Has there been any interest expressed in the large, or is this?
No, this is, this is.
Over the years?
I mean, I, I, I don't.
I don't know if it's a years, I'm.
I couldn't tell you the honest.
I was just wondering.
I, I don't understand, but I couldn't.
I went to the municipal authority.
Yeah, right.
Sure cold calls that happened over the years.
And this is nothing, this is something, hey, something to look into, if it doesn't, it is what it is, if someone offers a, like, an offer, something.
I believe that, um, part of the deal with York, if I remember correctly, was Sunbury, was the amount, I thought it was three hundred million dollars, but anyway.
It was, I saw, this was back in, the article was in twenty twenty-two, it could have been something later on, it was like two, it was two thirty-five, like I said, something could have been, hey, in later on.
I believe they also negotiated their ten years of gross rates as well, for the people. So, you know, our negotiations go, negotiations go.
Yeah, I guess that's one of those things that if it, if it works out, great, if it doesn't work out, we don't.
There's, there's one thing I do agree, what you said is, is that, say you go with something like P A water, um, you know, all the money goes into the pool, so, you know, as a rates quote here, services may not be here, it may be up in Oxford area where they be, reducing something because they always have something more along.
That's true, that's true, the incorporation, that, the way it works, um, you know, that's, that's not, that's not unique to a municipal authority or a water authority, that's unique to anybody that does a business. So, you know, basically, when they open someplace up, you know, they're making money here, it's offset the money over here, uh, you know, Wellspan just took over E V and, and, right up, used a lot of way to pay off E V's debt that was incurred up here, my money is sitting right down in, in New York, New Orleans area, so that's just the way it does it work.
Yeah.
You can't control that. Well, by saying so, you can check with Irishburg, they sold everything off down there, even the parking authority, go to Irishburg and see what they paid to park the sweep down there.
That's, that's what happened down there, their mayor went crazy down there, he spent a lot of money.
I don't plan on doing that, so don't, don't bring ideas in.
He had control over a lot of money and he spent a lot of money, that's why they got their salt such a, uh, invest down there.
Well, incinerator buried in Irishburg.
Right. Because he, he dumped the money into that and it's museum.
Yeah, museums.
Right, the money that they made off of some things. I, the only thing I'll say is, it never hurts the law, and there's, you never have to say yes.
It's just looking at options.
No, until.
You look.
Until you look.
Like I said, some of those things, we can see what happens and nothing comes about it, nothing comes about it, nothing ventured, nothing gained. Anyone else? All right, moving on, announcements, there's a few announcements, accepting letters of interest for one open spot on the Harb, must be licensed contractor, accepting letters of interest for seven open spots on the nuisance abatement boards of appeals. Uh, this is an important one, so everyone listen to this one, the no parking ordinance, people better known as the street sweeper, schedule is going back into effect March fifteenth, which is this coming Friday, so it's going back into effect, I said that's been posted on all the signs around the city for the last two years, so just let everyone know that. The all-inclusive Easter egg hunt will be hosted by Goodwill's and the Sunbury Police Department, which will take place Saturday, March twenty-third, from nine AM to twelve PM at David Percy Complex. The next city council meeting will be here, March twenty-fifth at six fifteen. The citywide cleanup will take place March twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth at Transfer Station. Uh, one PM through seven PM, they are city residents only, they will be checking IDs. Things that they will not accept are TVs, freon-based items, no paint, oil, chemicals will be accepted.
Or tires.
Or tires. Electronic cycling day will be April twentieth from ten to twelve up at the ice skating rink, also again, with TVs. The coffee for Craig for Watson Wish Foundation will be April twentieth at the Third, Third Street train station. Cameron Park and Front Street cleanup will take place, uh, April twenty-second at nine AM at Cameron Park. Sunbury Summer Kickoff, June eighth at the Riverfront. Tattoo Convention, which is known as Ink to Rink, is June seventh through the ninth up at the rink. Any information, contact Chris Booker. Christmas in July is Saturday, July twenty-seventh, from nine to four at Cameron Park. And the motorcycle rally, Rally at the Rink is August seventeenth through eighteenth. Contact the Bootleggers, uh, Benefit Club for more information. And now, is there any pub, oh wait, is there any other announcements?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
With, with, in March fifteenth, are, are residents for the street sweep?
Yes.
Where, for, are you with our?
Call system.
Oh, oh, the alert system? Uh, currently Jeff and I were, they're giving us the information how to lock in, we'll say, for example, for lack of terms, highlight the zone and area that you want to have calls sent out to, how to put that, uh, the call numbers into the system, like, do you want email, do you want cell phone, do you want text message? That's where we're at right now, Jeff and I, listening.
They think in the zone, in the zone, we're gonna go outside the city just a little bit, just a little bit outside, we're gonna go.
Yeah.
To Hamilton's, we're gonna go outside the city just a little bit, we gave them the zone and we gave all the data for all staffs, so we're close.
Would, would that be something we could use to notify people that something like this?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, that's like the kind of purpose, we're like, we're not, obviously, we're not at that point yet, but we're in the infant stage of just trying to get the staff information, the data in there, say, all right, we're gonna test it, see if it works, that.
Sounds a little different.
Yes, correct, yes.
And right now, they're pulling all of, uh, all the home, the two eight six numbers, they're pulling all them from, I don't know if it's from S M A, but they're, they're
but they're, they're getting all those numbers together. And so that when we have people sign up with, uh, with cell phones, we'll have everybody who wants in can get it.
Yes. Any other announcements that I forget? All right. Is there any public comment at this time? Please state the name, sir.
Um, Bob Sunbury, uh, my question is municipal authority. Are you looking at selling just the water service or the whole authority?
I mean, I, I guess it's, like I said, it's just discussion, it's just one of those things, want to see if there's an offer, what the offer is, what it, the offer's for, what it, like I said, if we would, if we would negotiate, would they come with the terms of what we'd be willing to negotiate, things like that. So I guess you could say, we're, I'll, I'll say I, can't say we. I'll say I am open to any and all ideas.
Because I would suggest that only water service we put out for bids. Because I'm sure they're making money in the transfer station and who knows what else it, municipal's authority is involved in, in the city. It, that type of scenario has worked very well for the joint rail authorities. So I think they may even work for something like this also.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Please state your name, ma'am.
Melissa Rouse, Dagenstein Community Library. I just wanted to give you a heads up, I did order the first story walk. I have the money for that. I'm waiting on a grant for the second story walk. It should be delivered within six to eight weeks. I've been in contact with Steve to have it turned off. So this is my idea. If we can get it installed, I'd like to do an opening the same day you do your summer kickoff. It gets along the riverwalk so that we can do like a river cutting ceremony with the city. Um, and we could put twenty panels along the riverwalk that the kids would, look at the boat and everything. So that's my idea. If it all gets, if the timing, it all kind of works out, so.
Women can have it.
If you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, yeah. Is there, is there something else we can add to it? Great idea, Melissa. Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, please state your name.
Uh, my name is Daryl Parsons. I'm just wondering if that street sweeper is running.
That, I, I can't say yes, I can't.
I'm hard to know that's not, I've seen them up. Yeah, there's not an issue with that.
So we'll say it's running at this time, whether it makes it full, uh, full through the full season, that may be a different story.
Dylan, they just spent about twenty thousand dollars on, uh, the group rooms and all that, vacuum, uh, tubes and so forth. So I talked to Steve the other day, was that what it was working on? He thinks it's in good shape, ready to go.
Yeah, I'm not sure they had a problem with the, I called the electronic system or whatever and they had to go in and down in Philadelphia do extensive work on it. So hopefully that problem is fixed.
Hopefully, nobody will move our car and that sucker don't come through.
Well, I, and I think a lot of people are used to it being called the street sweeper, but it's all, it's really called a no parking ordinance. So if the city has a working issue, we know it's gonna be open, if U G I P P N L. So that's the reason why. Uh, please, please state your name, sir.
Joseph Stutman. If it's any consolation, it came past my house last week, seemed to work pretty good.
Well, hopefully they didn't throw stuff out to break it.
Well, no, actually, I helped to get some of the stuff out there where they can pick it up. I'd like to have a trash can down there for people to toss stuff. That's another issue and get into it later.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Uh, Todd, you're sitting here for the skate park. Um, just wanna know what's going on with like the light situation down there. Um, I don't have the key and Jeremy's key and whatever else is going on, but literally only one light of one corner turns on, so it's basically almost dark down there. Um, I think it was already an issue when you guys did on three corner lights, when all the lights were on. And then it faded shadows in the other ramps and certain situations and like, we just got stuck with what's going on because Jeremy said he went down. I've never had a key, I didn't wind up in boxes, I don't know what box it turned on, but I have no idea. Um, supposedly he did something and others changed. So I don't know if there's any way that we can look into that.
Well, we looked at it today and talking to Carl at Martin Morning, see what he found. And then the next call is the K and N. And the key that Jeremy has, I have his number, I've given his number in my cell phone. I don't, somebody told me Jeremy went back. He answered.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I think he's trying to get back in here, so we hope, but, uh, but yeah, we just, like I said, we have a lot of kids that go down there that don't come to these things and, you know, are asking. Um, he personally, out of the park too, we all do. Um, it's only go down there, we don't know what's gonna happen, what's not. And we'll ask us that, actually travel from outside the city to come out of the park and.
Especially when getting nice out like that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the weather's breaking, it's, it's, I love it, but it's, it's just an issue. Um, so we just, we just.
Uh, Randy Meara, and I did speak, uh, I did text Jeremy Tyler.
Oh, thank you.
And he had the key and he was going down to check the lights. And he said what happens is, is that water was getting in and shortening everything out.
Okay, I was just thinking about.
And I passed that information on to Jim, who was going to pass it on to Carl.
Carl was there today.
Yeah.
And we tried to figure out where it's coming in. He only had figured out one chain and then probably more because, uh, they know it's, I'll go, you give them a call. So the only question I have, who would, I stopped on Facebook, I'm not a Facebook person.
I was gonna say, so, so Nate Williams, I think, so like he's working in New York this whole week. Um, yeah, so he's trying to get that active again. We made a video, we're trying to show the condition of the skate park. We're just trying to get it in front of you guys and more people because, I mean.
They get a cause, we might have to get, you know, people aware to get, and we all have many funds to fix.
We all care and we're trying, like I said, I got with Joel, we do the nonprofit stuff. Literally just on Friday, I got all the paperwork back to the state senate. So Joel had to reset his paperwork, reset everything, got that back in the mail. So hopefully we can start something here. I don't know if they got to work one with it or what, but we're trying. So that's what we're getting, we're getting every, every meeting, so. We just, we just want to make it great for our kids and, and, and. I got little ones coming up that are gonna want to use it, so.
Anything else, guys?
No, we appreciate you guys.
Awesome, thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Anyone else? All right, I turn this meeting.